... The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda tonight is the public hearing. We'll take this in three stages. Public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition. So we'll start by public speaking in favor of the budget. Anyone speaking in favor of the budget? Please come up, state your name.
I don't know. I have a question. I just am asking if I'm in favor or if I have one addition. So was that in favor or against?
Why don't you go up in favor?
I was insulting you.
Make it easy. How's that?
Fantastic. All right. I don't know. I haven't done this before. So, um...
Can you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Is that okay?
You can do it after, but... Thank you.
So I'm Allison Cox. I live at 166 Edinburgh Street in Marlboro. I'm a parent here, and I'm also the librarian at the high school. My only concern with this budget is the lack of provision for elementary school librarians. I watched the budget workshop that was filmed here a couple of weeks ago. When Ms. Hennessy inquired about the status of our elementary school library programs, an administrator responded that the libraries were doing okay, staffed as they are by literacy specialists and some parent volunteers. The insinuation was that librarians can be replaced by volunteers who quote, "put stickers on books and put them on shelves." Nobody seemed bothered by that. I realized that it's my chance to educate people about what school librarians really do and why they're important. First, elementary school libraries are not a luxury, as was stated at that time. Yes, there are schools in other parts of the state that don't have librarians in the elementary schools, but around here Marlboro is subpar in this respect. Hudson, for example, has two full-time DESE-certified elementary school librarians. Southboro has two. Westboro has three. Sudbury and Northboro each have four, one at each of their elementary schools. We are surrounded by towns that invest in their elementary school libraries. It was stated that literacy specialists get help from librarians in the district. There are only two of us, one at the middle school and myself, and neither of us has an aide. I have never been asked, nor do I have the time, to assist in the elementary schools. Maybe he was referring to the fact that the middle school librarian once showed the literacy specialists how to use the circulation system and has bought some books and supplies for them. Please understand that books and supplies do not equal a school library program. It is certainly not enough to satisfy the requirements of ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. ESSA Title II Part A calls for, quote, "supporting the instructional services provided by effective school library programs." The American Association of School Librarians has defined the term "effective school library program" to assist with the implementation of ESSA at the state and district level. Quote, "An effective school library program has a certified school librarian at the helm, provides personalized learning environments, and offers equitable access to resources to ensure a well-rounded education for every student." Literacy specialists are wonderful, and I've no doubt they're doing great things, but they don't count as school librarians. Just check with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which requires school library teachers to have a master's degree plus certification as a school library teacher from a DESE-approved program. So, for example, I have a bachelor's degree in English, a master's degree in library science, and K-12 certification from Simmons College, which required of me, among other things, to complete two full semesters of student teaching. I'm evaluated according to the same state-mandated evaluation system as all the other teachers in the district. Furthermore, school libraries are not just houses for books. School libraries are places for devouring information. Often this happens through books, but most often, our students discover information via electronic resources. Without the guidance of a school librarian, inquiry often begins and ends with a Google search. With guidance from a school librarian, a whole other world of resources opens up to them. Rather than throw our elementary kids to the wolves of a Google search or a social media post, we should be placing them into the hands of professional librarians who select electronic informational resources, evaluate internet sources, and teach students the hows and whys of doing the same. Just a little bit more. Did you know that the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners provides for free thousands of dollars' worth of age-appropriate research databases, but only to schools that employ certified librarians? We use our share at the high school every day. Last month alone Marlboro High School students performed 1,762 database searches, netting results from verifiable credible sources. And that was during a short month with a vacation week. I would love to show you the wonderful resources we could get for our elementary students if only we employed even one elementary school librarian. As a school librarian, I teach research lessons alongside teachers from all other disciplines. On a typical day, I see on average 50 students per period, every period, circulate books, headphones, and Chromebook chargers, troubleshoot printers and copiers, balance a budget, compose lesson plans, maintain our collection and our library website, and deal with myriad discipline issues. My time is up. Please keep in mind, our youngest students are being bombarded by digital information every day, and we need to help them wade through it. Digital literacy is a part of the information literacy curriculum addressed in all of the library standards. We're all worried about the impact of fake news. Here's our chance to do something about it. I'm just asking you, please, to consider adding at least one elementary school librarian to our budget. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak more in favor of the budget? Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Anyone speaking in opposition? Is there anyone speaking in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition? See it none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing. Thank you very much. Presentation, High School Student Advisory Committee.
I'd like to invite the high school students up, and we do have a... One person who was not able to come due to play practice tonight. Heidi is not here to pursue, so we have Jen who is replacing her. So come on up. Students?
Hello. My name's Jen Maciel, and I'm a freshman here at Marlboro High. When Heidi approached me about speaking, I was a little hesitant, but then when she told me it was about MASC, I like jumped at the opportunity. This year was my first time attending MASC, and for those of you who don't know what that is, it's the Massachusetts Association Student Council. And it's a leadership conference where a bunch of student councils from the Massachusetts area come together to talk about new ideas to help schools, and it's a great opportunity for schools to learn on how to base just getting together and participating. It's an opportunity for... Well, personally, I learned a lot from other students and other schools. Sorry. I also had a really good time meeting people from other communities that I normally wouldn't really meet. So I think MASC is a great way to kind of bring the communities together in Massachusetts, and the theme for this year was building, like it was construction, and it was building new leaders. From that theme, we all experienced something that we haven't experienced in our own schools, and we could bring back that experience in order to build leaders within our school itself to make us one group of leaders that can eventually make a bigger impact on our school in general. Any questions?
Questions for the committee? Any questions for the committee?
Can you give us just an example of something?
Oh, sorry.
You're like, who's talking? Can you just give, you know, like an example of a concrete thing that you think you could bring back?
Okay, yeah. I was personally put into a workshop about how to make everyone in the school feel like they belong somewhere. They called these kids that don't really participate into any like clubs or stuff the camo kids, because no one really sees them. And they showed us how we can see them and how we can incorporate them into our daily school activities. One of the ways was kind of just having a, not field day in sort, but like, for example, we have ELBs on B Block. And maybe we can take that time out of the school to have this group of kids just randomly placed together and see what they can make out of something, basically out of nothing, by working together and see if they're interested in anything else in the school.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tim Goleger. I'm a sophomore here at the high school. I'm going to keep tonight short and sweet and kind of off-script. So I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about MICA, which is a music festival that five of the six of our performing groups at the high school will be partaking in. MICA stands for the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, most likely. So it's a program where choral and instrument... Choirs and instrumentalists get together, and we perform. It's really an honor for the musicians to get together and perform for our peers and perform for teachers who are around the state. And so we will be judged by a panel of adjudicators, who are usually the professors or teachers. And after our performance, we'll be brought into a room, and we'll have a clinic, and they kind of help us through the rougher portions of our performance. And then after all that's over, all the musicians get back together in the auditorium or wherever they perform, and they get awards. So last year chorists, our chorus brought home a gold, excuse me, a bronze medal. Acapella choir, wind ensemble, and string ensemble, I believe, brought home silver medals, and concert band brought home a gold medal. So we're hoping to, you know, keep our reputations intact and maybe even improve. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Beebe. I'm going to talk about our STEM program here at the Marlboro High School. I'm a freshman. I've been in STEM since sixth grade, when we were able to actually get into STEM. This year, we've worked on multiple projects. We've done two so far. One for our first and second term, and then our third and fourth, which we are currently working on. For our first and second-term project, we worked on constructing a playground that would be futuristic, and everyone was able to use it. My group was actually, came up with a slide, and it was like a futuristic slide with all lights and everything that a kid would want. We interviewed kids from Jarrock Elementary School to see what they would actually want in playground, and that helped us get everything we needed for a kid who would want to play at our playground. And then for this term, for Term Three, we started working on a new project, and we had to be in companies, or basically groups. And my company was called TechGo. I actually am in a group with Mrs. Hennessy's daughter, Emma. And so one of the cool things is we actually got to 3D-print, which is actually really cool. We had to come up with a logo, and we came up with like a gear and the earth, which was in the center of the gear. And that's kind of almost all we've done so far with this project. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, anything to add? Thank you all for coming tonight. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize in advance. This is a little lengthier than usual because of the canceled meeting on the 14th, so we're trying to make sure we touch all of the bases. So as you see around you, we have had our branding materials on display. The tent goes up higher. It's not really just a short tent. We couldn't put it up any higher in this building. We have, as you know, been taking part in an ongoing effort to rebrand with our new logo, the new website. And concurrent with that, we have done some purchasing of materials that teachers or administrators can use when they're out and about as brand sort of ambassadors of the Marlboro Public Schools. Also, students, BPA, I'm thinking off the top, and others at job fairs and so on can certainly use some of these banner stands. And you can see the banner stands represent... One of them is for visual and performing arts. One is for our community connectedness. Another is for our academics and sports. And then the lifetime of learning innovation design, that mirrors the pillars, the different pillars that were in our brochure that we put out last year. Just to forecast ahead, we are looking at an annual report that will come out probably at the beginning of the next school year. We're working with a designer on having that updated each year. I wanted to thank Reyna Rego, who has been very instrumental in working with our designer and our graphic person to bring these to fruition. I wanted you to see them. So there they are. MCAS testing is upon us. We've begun to prepare for annual spring MCAS testing. We have set up a testing schedule that's on all of the school sites. We've been prepping rosters and accommodations and running infrastructure tests for the computer-based testing in grades three to eight. You'll recall that the state mandated computer-based testing for grades four and eight, but as we did last year, we're doing computer-based for all. These grades will participate in the next-generation MCAS, and this combines the best features of MCAS, next-generation MCAS, and PARC test items. Massachusetts is number one in the nation in elementary and secondary education due to the rigor of our standards-based assessments. In the information and handouts section, I have included a letter from Commissioner Chester on the real importance of this statewide testing and an explanation of why participation is so crucial. We're actually looking in terms of accountability at a 95% participation rate in order to be accountable into a Level One or a Level Two. The next item is a link that I provided for you. I found this very interesting, that Governor Charlie Baker was on CBS this morning discussing the top honor that was given to Massachusetts in the U.S. News and World Report's inaugural ranking of best states in the nation. And we were ranked number one. This was based on education, health care, and economy. Also important to note that there was a NISH poll recently, and AMSA, which is another school in our city, ranked very high, but Marlboro High School already also ranked 78th, which is a big honor as well. Summit on Poverty. We had a terrific team of six. It seems like so long ago now that we were at Clark University. It was March 10th. Michelle Bodenhendry came with us, Charlie Collieri, Brian Daniels, Lynn Medallu, Becky Murphy, and myself. This was sponsored by the Joint Superintendent and School Committee Association, and it focused on the progress that many districts, rural, urban, and suburban have made in dealing with the increase of students of poverty. And it was interesting for me to hear the story of the three faces of poverty and what that looks like in each of these districts, be it rural, urban, or suburban. There's certainly a lot of challenges that still lie ahead in this area. Case Conference. Mary Murphy and I attended the 2017 Case Leadership Conference. The theme was harnessing the power of social-emotional learning to support staff and student learning and well-being. We were... We heard keynote speakers Jessica Minahan on reducing anxiety in the classroom, and we've seen her many times in our school district, as well as John Doria, another friend. How do districts integrate social-emotional learning to build positive school culture? Wonderful day was spent there. STEM Career Mentoring Program. A big shout-out goes to some of our industry partners, specifically Dell, UMass, Marlboro Hospital, GE Healthcare, SAS Institute, Dow, and Boston Scientific. Their employees came to the high school a few weeks ago to help our 10th-grade STEM students identify their own soft skills and teach them how to market themselves to a company, how to pitch themselves. And these career mentors provided feedback and coaching for our students, and this is a really valuable skill as our students move towards college and career. The Marlboro High School Business Professionals of America, state winners, are as follows, and I do want to read these names. This is quite an accomplishment. But most importantly, Marlboro was named the Chapter of Distinction for increasing membership, community service, and fundraising activities. Congratulations not only to the students, whom I'll mention in a moment, but also to advisor Jane Haley, who does a tremendous job with these students and the teams to prepare them for qualification. Individual winners Ryan McGlashan, first-place payroll accounting, fifth-place entrepreneurship, and second-place accounting math concepts. Matthew Allen, third-place payroll accounting. Ben Johnson, third-place fundamental accounting. Tyler Atkins, fifth-place fundamental accounting, first-place extemporaneous speech, fifth-place project management concepts. Dorothy Davis, second-place administrative support research project. Abigail Robergue, third-place administrative support research project. Ivana Awada, first-place graphic design promotion. Michaela Zahara, second-place presentation management. Itzel Moreno, second-place business meeting concepts. Dylan Chaccio, fourth-place project management concepts. And finally, team winner, second-place small-business-management-team B. Tyler Atkins, Ethan Kirsch, Patrick McCarthy, and Nick Malanson. Also included in your handouts beyond the MCAS participation information from the commissioner are two flyers of two very important events that are coming up. The Citywide Art Show is this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Whitcomb School. This year, something new. We are celebrating not only the art of our K-12 students, but also our rich diversity in the city with an interactive art project, as well as dance, international dance, and some food as well. So make sure you make your way up to the third floor for our enhanced citywide art show. And lastly, in the packet is the information for the Day on the Hill. If you are interested, please let Patty Sibilia know. She'll be happy to register you. I looked at the information given, and nowhere did I find the date until I clicked on the link. It's April 25th. It's not at the State House due to renovations. It's across the street in the Masonic Brethren Lodge. So... Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent? See it none. Executive Director of Primary and Elementary Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It seems like I wrote this report a long time ago, because I think I did.
You did.
So the first item was on March 9th, we had a professional development day. It was more building-focused with less choice. And the overall focus was instructional practices that maximize student achievement throughout the district. I think Mike's going to add a little bit more to that. We also had specific trainings set up for the behavior technicians and the parent educators as well. Kindergarten registration. So we have completed the first round of kindergarten registration, and as of the last day, we had three less students registered for kindergarten at this time this year than we did last year. There is a slight shift in enrollment, but it seems to be pretty steady. And so as of right now, it's 293 students registered for next year's kindergarten. Last year at this year, at this time, we had received an additional 90, approximately 90 registrations after registration period. So we expect that we're once again going to be between 385 and 400 students, in case there was any question on that one.
How's... Can I just ask you where the trend is in terms of buildings?
So as of right now, it was about 20 less at Jarrock, a little bit less at Kane, and about 20 more at Richer. So the enrollment, yeah, the pre-enrollment at Richer right now is about what is currently in kindergarten as of today. So we expect an increase. Yeah. The Title I, bilingual information night. On this, on March 8th, I went and teamed up with Lynn Medallu, and we did a presentation to the bilingual parents. Should look familiar. It's in your packet. It's basically the same presentation that I did here early in the year, and I told them that we were trying to give them the same information that we gave all community members and the elected officials in Marlboro. We did a little bit talking about the difference between a formative assessment, an assessment that the teachers do on a daily basis, and the universal screenings, and then the statewide assessments that we do. So to try to educate them. One of our main concerns was that the PARC, the parent reports that went out in Spanish and Portuguese this year had children's names on it, not the parents as a sample. They just put random names on those samples. And we were concerned that parents wouldn't understand that it was a sample and it was trying to explain to you what you were getting for your children. So we wanted to really make sure and reach out and have a time that we could answer questions and be explicitly clear on what that information that went home earlier this year looked, what it was meant to mean, and then what reports would look like moving forward, what old MCAS reports, the information. And we also spent some time talking about the accountability status as well of the district and the schools. Finally, Second Step and Responsive Classroom. I added this item because I know there were some questions about what we were doing to, for the social-emotional needs, especially at the elementary schools. And I included two slides from the Department of Education Low Income Education Access Project to show what emotions are hardwired into children. And so they said anger, disgust, fear, joy, sadness, and surprise. That's what is hardwired in the students. Everything else has to be explicitly taught to children. So empathy, forgiveness, gratitude, those are all taught skills. And so we have to make sure we do use responsive classroom. We are not going away from that. That has more of an academic focus. That's our school culture. That is our rules in schools. That is our expectations for all. It also aligns well with PBIS. Second Step is more explicit instruction and modeling of these behaviors and what we expect. And then finally, we have academic language and social-emotional language that is being explicitly taught as well. All of these, the variety together, hopefully will support our students moving forward. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Hennessy.
Hi. Thank you. Had a lot when I was reviewing the Title I, because although it's, you know, the same kind of presentation, there were still some things that kind of jumped out to me that I guess brought some question to mind as were some things shifting a little bit? So I don't mind if I could ask a little bit. Under the assessments, I was noticing like DRAs weren't mentioned as one of the assessments. And I know we've had a number of different discussions around, you know, FAST, whether it was going to be, you know, utilizing FAST ELA, FAST Math, DRAs, whether that was still going to be used. And some of the elementary schools were using them a little bit more, I believe, than some other elementary schools. So I was trying to understand, is that changing?
So what was in that presentation was a one-page sample of an assessment calendar. And that assessment calendar was the universal screenings and state assessments that are given throughout the year. So for example, access testing was in there, the beginning of the year, EL. It would be speaking in kindergarten, but it's writing for all other grades. And a lot of FAST was on there. So you saw CBR reading and AMATH may have been on, depending on the grade level.
Right.
So those are the universal screenings. The DRAs are in addition to, those are for instructional tools.
Right.
So the, at the elementary schools, I think consistently, in one and two, DRA is still being given. We tried to transition, and we were piloting this year CBM Comp, which was a part of the FAST bridge. CBM Comp was given at the fall assessment period. It's no longer available. It is now embedded in CBM reading. So we have to see if we can get the same data, because the CBM Comp gave us a conversion to the DRA.
Right.
So as long as FAST keeps on changing their tools, the answer is we'll still try to see what fits, but for now, it's going to be a combo.
Okay. And sorry, just kind of, when I was reading over it, that's where that came from. Okay, and as well, and, you know, I don't know where this falls, but it was mentioning in regards to the enrichment block classes that were being offered up at Whitcomb for sixth grade and the assistance...
All right. So that slide for the enrichment block is a directly slide from the presentation that Mike and I gave to the school committee early in the year. So those were actions that were being taken at the school level to address areas of concerns.
Some of those areas.
So intervention in enrichment blocks, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee?
The Responsive Classroom in the Second Step is going on in all three schools?
It will be going on, yes. For the last, for years and years, Responsive Classroom is a course that we offer over the summer for anyone that hasn't taken, or any new employees as well. So that would, that continues. Second Step is something that Heather has used some of her grant resources to make sure that we have the professional development kits in the buildings in order to support moving forward, consistently through all the schools moving forward.
And do you do anything at ECC?
At ECC, not as explicit. They're more of a, everything they do is social and emotional.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the presentation that you gave to the EL families, I think it said in here that the people that were at the talk were the folks that are in the ESL class.
So we did put it on the website, and we advertised it, and we invited to everyone, but it was mandatory for everyone that was in the ESL class to also attend, yes.
Because I was going to ask, how, are you planning to reach out to families that are not? Is there, there's a cap in that ELA class, like in ELA class, right?
There were about 90 people.
There was, yeah, there was close, yeah. There was over 90 people, about 93, yeah.
And they loved it.
Yeah.
They were enthusiastic.
Oh, good.
Took advantage of the audience that was already available.
Captive audience, yeah.
Questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Ms. Matthews.
Mary, the slides.
Yeah.
The ones showing the results and then the...
The sample pages?
No, the graphs of meeting expectations.
Oh, yeah.
And then the actions to address opportunities. So those are the ones that were presented previously.
Those were the, yes. There was nothing there that was not already presented to the school committee.
These are still the things in progress and stuff.
Yes, yes. Those were from earlier this year, based on this year's data.
I know, because I'm reading it, and I'm going, well, aren't we doing that already?
Yes, and that was the intent. It was the same information that was provided to you.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Executive Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I want to talk about three things. The MAS imaging project, some information about the March 9th Release Day, and advanced placement exams. Christine Cody, who's our instructional technology teacher, grade seven at the middle school, is working on a wonderful project called the MAS Imaging Project with her students, which started in the fall. And because we changed during the trimesters, we've had only a few students who were able to stay with this imaging project throughout the year. The more I look into this project, the more, the more impressed I am. I talked to students. In my report, I've mentioned some of the remarks. I would like the students and Christine Cody to come here and make a presentation, because I think making a presentation in front of the school committee, like the high school students you saw earlier, having the middle school students come, I think it's a big deal. And plus, I can't, I can't speak for how well they're doing. But I can tell you that, that these group of ninth graders, I mean, this group of students work with ninth graders from Skagway, Canada, do a research project with Arizona State University and NASA. Really what they're doing is they're looking for a soft place to land by a Land Rover in the year 2020. Now, what's fascinating about is what the students were doing in terms of studying space, in terms of studying exploration, and studying Mars. I gave you the first names. I want to give you the full names of these six students. Rachel DiDonato, Anna Palencia, Paulo Jarek Borges, Ava Liberty, Heath Sanneil, and Joshua Irons. Had a chance to talk to them, and I quoted them in my report to you. Second thing I want to talk about is the March 9th Release Day. So earlier in the year, we talked about how we had, Mary and I talked about how we had 15 teachers who were trained in instructional strategies. They're finishing up their online course. They presented during the March 9th Release Day instead of having consultants. They did a great job. Now, not all of them presented on March 9th. Some of them presented during the staff meetings on alternate days, but most of them did present. We had two members that were not feeling well, so some of our high school and middle school instructional leaders had to double up. But given that, I thought they did a super job. Not only that, their colleagues thought they did a great job. When we looked at the data, the data said that over 85% of the staff felt that they could use strategies the next day. That's pretty good. Not only that, is if you look at the comments that teachers said, they spoke very highly of their colleagues, used words like awesome, great, terrific. That does, that's unusual. So thanks to all of our teachers, those that participated, and then those that facilitated for the March 9th day. I want to talk about advanced placement exams. 253 students are scheduled to take the advanced placement exams. And so one of the things that we looked at, we looked at, well, how does that compare to the previous five years? So it's around the same for the last several years. It's around 250, 257, 253. 80 of those students are categorized as low-income students, not 143. The 143 are low-income exams, which means out of the 80, some of them took multiple, some of them are going to take multiple subject exams. Students were able to practice on Saturdays. I think one of the things I will do in, maybe for the next time, I won't speak about it, but in the packet, I include a five-year results. I think you should look at that and see how our students have fared over the last five years. I think there might have been a grant that the district had in 2013, a little bit of bump in scores, bump in participation. Then it kind of leveled out, so you could take a look at how our students did comparing against the state, and then they called it global, so you could take a look at those results. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Executive Director of Money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be as quick as I can. The food service account was stable from last month. The balances are just over $2,000. Again, breakfast charging is a majority of the debt for that, but that's been pretty stable since the past two years. We've been at or around $2,000 almost the entire time. Online payments increased in January, slightly down in February, but not by much, with more transactions and payment totals for two months. I attached the report of both the food service debt and also of the online payments for you to peruse. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. School Building Committee met yesterday at 4:00 PM at City Hall. I don't want to steal the thunder from Ms. Ryan, but it was a meeting just to go over the responsibilities and what is coming up in the next two months, really, of the extreme amount of work that needs to get done for us to come to some decision points about where the building project is going to go. Again, on March 9th and March 10th, we met with Lamaro Pagano and Dataless, and I apologize, I spelled Dataless wrong in my report. I just caught that now. But we met with them to review kind of the responsibilities for the team and to talk about what needs to get done as quickly as possible. Thank everyone for going to these meetings. These are ramping up very quickly, and it's going to be a majority of the time between now and June 30th to make sure we get these reports done and to a satisfactory manner to the MSBA. Because that's, at the end of the day, they're the ones who have the purse strings, so they're the ones we have to make happy. The salary expense projections for this fiscal year are on target. I'm happy with the way things have gone. We have not had any large increase in our out-of-district placements. Most of our expense costs have been relatively stable, if not less than projections last year. So we don't feel the need at this point to even make a request for capital for technology to the city at this time. We feel like we're going to be able to handle that within our own operating budget for this next coming year. Any excess funds we have will prepay tuition for next fiscal year. So as it stands right now, we don't feel the need to put a request into city for capital for technology. We can pay for that out of this year's funds. And also, anything that's remaining over, I'll be looking and working with Heather to prepay any students who are 21 years old this year. So that's my report for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Just curious, during the meeting that you all had yesterday, was there any discussion about the modular situation?
No, because it was on the project that we were talking about. It wasn't necessarily about the current situation.
Okay. We'll talk in budget. Thank you.
If it hasn't been set up yet, I've asked my aide to set up a meeting for the short-term space committee so we can discuss it and make some decisions on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Matthews.
Mike, on the balance summary, the negative and positive, or negative, active, positive, inactive, kind of cancel each other out, right?
Yes. So what, if you look at the actual report, we have a total negative accounts of $2,000, but our total positive accounts are over $36,000. So that means that the majority of the parents have positive balances in their child's school lunch account. That clearly outweighs the negative. However, the rules that were passed a couple years ago, all of those negative accounts, even though we might have money on the books, we have to zero them out. And all of the positives that are currently there, we count as a liability into next year's. This, this program, I don't mean to get too detailed, but this program has to run on its own as a revenue and expense source. So anything that's a positive, active account at the end of this year is a liability because it's a prepaid expense going into next year. So what we have to do is, at the end of the year, we have to pay off anything that's negative, and we do it on the last warrant of the year. It's usually a small amount, usually about $1,700, but I can't carry those forwards in that revolving account.
So the positive, inactive, I assume are accounts that people aren't using?
Or students have moved, and they have not yet asked us for...
And they left money in there?
A refund. A refund.
And that money just sits there? It doesn't, it doesn't get used?
Until, usually at the end of the year, what happens is we're looking at the students who have left, and then we will do refunds. But usually, they get to me well before then, and they, they request the money.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of the February 28th School Committee Meeting.
Motion to accept as submitted.
Motion made, seconded to accept as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. Action items, 2017, 18 program of study changes.
Thank you. Principal Coleri from the high school is here to discuss the changes to the program of studies. I think you've had a small summary of those changes, as well as the copious pages of documents. It's really not meant to be printed out. It's an electronic program of studies. But Principal Coleri will review with you those changes.
Do that delicately as possible.
Thank you. Welcome, Principal Coleri. Thank you.
Sure thing. I'll try to maintain momentum. Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I had shared with folks kind of a summary of changes in the program of studies. This is an annual occurrence in terms of updating the program of studies to reflect courses that we're offering for this next school year, as well as reflect courses that we've, to some extent, offered in the past and may offer in the future. I've provided you with a summary to include some of that information to indicate some of the new courses that have been there. I'm not going to go through all of the details of those changes. You have that, so I'm happy to answer questions relative to that. I did want to provide clarification on a few items. First, in world language, just to call your attention to one piece, there was reference in the program of studies relative to French I and French II. So just for clarification purposes, there was, there have been discussions over the past several weeks, I'd say, kind of leading up to this process. So in terms of the printing of the program of studies and communicating that information, we had just finalized a conversation with some of the teachers the other day about the changes. So the program of studies is going to be edited to reflect that those French I and French II will be removed, because those are not courses that we're going to be continuing to offer. Another piece for clarification, because I think we're offering a new course in world language relative to unleveled classes. And unlevelled classes was a point of conversation that came up, I believe, I might be mixing up my meetings, but it came up at a budget meeting or a school committee meeting I was at prior. And so since that time with MCAS and so on, my leadership team has not met until yesterday, and that was a topic of conversation for yesterday's agenda, which is a continued conversation that we're going to have. But typically, what we've had with unleveled courses is we have a number of unleveled courses in the arts, in music, in arts, in PE, in health, wellness. There's also some offerings that are in science. They're meant to be kind of high-interest courses, and they're also a place that we've used for courses that, first time that we're starting that we're offering them, to offer them to a wide array of students, to see if we can generate interest and kind of build off of the interests of the students. Those courses are offered as unleveled courses, and then I have, at this point, I have some teachers who have petitioned to make those unleveled courses leveled courses moving forward. So that's the conversation that we have to have within the leadership team to talk about GPA and unleveled courses and so on. So that's a conversation that is ongoing. So beyond those two pieces of information, are there other questions that I can answer about the program of studies for you?
Can you just clarify, though, what you said? So how does it factor, if it's unleveled, how does it factor into a GPA?
It doesn't. An unlevelled course, that's in the, if you look in the introduction of the program of studies, the unlevelled courses are listed as not factoring into the GPA.
But they still get credit for them?
Yes. Oh, yes. They still get credit. But not towards the GPA.
So to piggyback on that, I guess...
Ms. Matthews.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry. I assume, Michelle, I'm sorry. It's okay. In your conversation...
Yeah.
What constitutes whether or not a class that has been running for some time...
Yep.
...is or isn't leveled?
There are some courses that, I think some examples that I can point to. Courses that were full-year courses that were changed to semester courses, those had level designation prior, and then maintained their level designation moving forward. Some new courses that were proposed last year, infectious diseases, food sciences, this year with the mythology course, those were kind of in trial areas, and let's see what we can do.
That goes back to the examples that I had sent to you. So the biology I, biology II versus...
Biology I, biology II is a leveled course.
Right.
Yep.
But it's a semester course.
Bio I, bio II isn't...
Or, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not shown as leveled, even though it's I and II, but it's...
It is leveled as a college preparatory class.
It's a CP class.
Yep.
Right.
It's not listed as an unleveled course.
Right. But then food sciences and...
And infectious diseases were, right, as in their, in the first iteration of these courses. And then since that time, looking at enrollment of students and the work that they're doing and the adoptions or the adaptations that are made to curriculum.
Well, I guess my concern was, or the reason I, my question was, it's a, many of these are lab sciences, which is a graduation requirement, and is being presented to the students as a lab science, and yet they're not going to be fulfilling their lab science requirement? Or are they? It may not be weighted, but are they fulfilling their lab science requirement?
Also a piece of that, too, because Mass Core actually articulates, it places the control of the determination for a lab science at the hands of the school, so that determination can be made by then. So this is all part of that larger conversation. So I'm not shying away from the conversation. I'm just, I'm not at a point where I can say to you concretely, here's where we are, because that conversation hasn't completely happened.
Okay.
You know, adding to that is that we have one of our members, our leaders from the Science Department is currently out on maternity leave, which contributes to this conversation as well. That doesn't mean that the conversation is going to stop as a result of that, but we're starting that process.
Okay.
Before we leave the leveled conversation, just, you know, to keep it on the same track, though, what makes that determination? I guess my, I was just curious, as far as like some of the arts courses not necessarily being leveled courses, what makes that determination?
When I dig in this, to this historically, I'm not finding necessarily a common trend.
I guess that's why I'm kind of asking the question, because...
And that's part of the reason why it's a reasonable question to ask, and I don't have enough concrete information to provide you. I will say that in years past, when I've been in other conversations about courses and what's counted and what's not...
Right.
The college determination for GPA is also a factor in a lot of schools' decisions of what to apply to GPA versus what to not. So there are some colleges that will choose not to count any of the other non-core academic areas as part of the GPA, and they'll do their own calculation or recalculation of GPA for students based on the level of the course they're in and the credits that they earn.
Right.
So that factors in, too. So, but there's lots of things, changes about the college admission process, and lots of colleges doing different things, and with Mass Core and additional interpretations of what GPAs are, and some districts that have weighted GPAs versus unweighted GPAs and so on. It's a, as much as I'd love to say this is just a little conversation to have...
It's not.
This is like a big, little onion, like, that we just continue to kind of expose more and more questions.
Yeah.
And we say, okay, we have to kind of define this. So this is not very a simple process, so I'm going to try to take this in stages. So as much as I'd like to say, well, what constitutes a leveled course versus an unleveled course? Historically, the process has been proposing new courses, and there's a determination made in the proposal. Who is this for? What group of students is this for? Is this filling an interest, or is this filling like a rigor need? And so that is part of the factor. The other pieces, it's linked to national standards, or state standards, or curriculum standards, or other pieces that contribute to the curriculum for the course. So all of those factor in, but I'd love to be able to point to, here are the clear steps that we follow in determining that, but I haven't been able to find that yet.
Right. And that kind of speaks to also-
So I look at that as building it, so, and that's okay.
And that speaks to also where we have a hope of continuing to increase the semester offerings, which address some of the other issues that we have-
Right.
Going on as well. So, okay. Go back to what you wanted to, thank you.
Sure.
No, and I appreciate you answering some of the questions. I don't know if you want to just answer them separately back in the response in the email. I know you just addressed some of them.
I addressed some that were, I feel like they were pertinent, bigger pieces that I wanted to kind of say upfront, because they were, in terms of the timing of the publication, the timing of which the Program of Studies is provided to you, and the timing in which we finalized a lot of our decisions. Sometimes those calendars overlap a little bit.
Yep. So I guess the only two other things that I think do need to be discussed here are the, the business information and technology, the waiver test, the STEM students versus, no, they're not STEM, they're STEAM students, and the requirement for freshman year. And I know it's been a table conversation for a while as to, is ninth grade really still the appropriate time to be giving these kids this level of class when they're getting a lot of it in the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
And so shouldn't it be something that's more advanced and not requiring either a test out? If we're making it a graduation requirement, is it something that's enough or not? And, you know, I know every year, some kids last year did get the test, not everybody got the test, some are in it, and again, then it goes to that, the next step into ninth grade, and the, and the handling of how these kids coming out of STEAM are going to be put into, where are they going to be put into, whether they're going into a STEM model, a teaming model, a overall STEAM model? I don't know, that's what, I guess. And this piece of it is just the one freshman requirement that they either have or don't have. In the past, most STEM kids did not take it.
Because it was embedded as part of-
Correct.
A coursework that they were doing.
Correct.
Right.
So.
So that, a lot of questions in there.
Yeah, I know. Well, again, it's, it's another onion, I know.
So, right, so I'm going to take an element of it. The question you're asking is a logical one, clearly. We've been updating kind of our ECS IT courses for the past several years, and the conversations that I've had with both Sharon Mattingly, as a teacher leader for the Business IT Department, as well as Dan Riley, and with the partnership that we forged with QCC and the pathways that we've kind of created, we've added an ECS kind of IT II course, which is the QCC course. And so we've worked backward from there to develop what the ECS IT course has been. So even if you look at kind of the curriculum for the courses over the past several years, it's changed. It's also our place for our ninth graders, where Naviance instruction is taking place for our kids, so that's a place where we can kind of unify our ninth graders and provide them with kind of a tutorial there. I might agree with you that we continue to look at the process, but I think with the continued addition of Google Classroom, Google Documents, Using the Drive, and so on, as a foundational element for our Chromebooks for our kids, this is our place where we can kind of introduce some of those strategies to our kids. I know that they're getting Chromebooks in middle school as well.
Well, right, I was just going to say-
And so a lot of that is introduced, but the goal is to kind of continue to advance them forward. So, yes, the curriculum is continually revised each year. The Program of Studies, I would not list as the curriculum for a course. I would list that as kind of a pricey, if you will, of what is addressed, but it is something that we continue to kind of look at and revise.
Okay.
The test that you asked about, that I'll look into, because I remember we had this conversation last year in terms of who participated versus who didn't, and I didn't bring that data with me.
That's okay.
So I'll come back to that. Thank you.
And then the elephant in the room, wellness. So I know it's, it's a conversation we've been having in many different places, and I guess I'm disappointed, I guess is the only word I can use right now, that there's not more to wellness for next year.
Mm-hmm.
We have some major issues with class sizes, offerings, putting kids, fulfilling the requirement that we felt we needed to enforce. And I think we're going to continue a conversation and maybe push it down to policy, but are there kids participating in lifetime and team activities and health issues, reality check, and-
I've got the numbers right here.
Yeah, 225 are in lifetime activities, and about 46 or so are in the reality check course. The reality check course was a course that was in hibernation for, saying that politely, for the past couple of years.
Yeah.
And I'd say, based on Metro West's Adolescent Health Survey data, that is a-
Should be a required class. Yeah.
In my previous district, and I don't often try to reference this, but this course existed in my previous district, and over the time that I was there, I pushed this as a graduation requirement, and I actually got an email two months ago that said, hey, we finally got it, thank you, because of the importance of this course. So I anticipate that it's going to continue to grow. In addition, with the work that's been done through the DBT grant with our school adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors, there's been a push, as well as the internships that were done over the summer with some of our STEM students and a number of other students who are involved in the SHINE SWAT initiative and partnership that we have, that there's a push to put mindfulness into our wellness curriculum. So we're piloting that now, in the hopes of adding that more full-fledged into next year. So our, you know, given the number of staff members that I have in the wellness department, and the number of offerings that I can provide, I actually think we're doing pretty well.
Yeah? Where's yours?
Tennessee.
Thank you. So the wellness situation definitely was something which, you know, I made these guys aware. It's definitely been on my mind, because, as you know, before you had ever arrived here, there was a, a push of elimination of the athletic waiver that was in place at that time, more from a standpoint of, I think as it was described to us, meeting Mass Core requirements. Although I will say, Mass Core requirements are a little mushy, and Mass General Law mushy around what's really required for involvement as far as physical education and wellness as a, as a whole. And at that point in time, when we had agreed to move forward, part of it was to go hand in hand with a development, or a richer development, I guess I should say, of a wellness curriculum that really spanned a whole bunch of different areas, not just specifically PE, not just specifically health or nutrition, but really the whole gamut. And, you know, unfortunately, I think we probably all could agree that that really hasn't taken place with a lot of robust activity of really developing a huge amount more in wellness. Yet we, we did go ahead and make adaptations and make a requirement of students needing to then take PE, health at minimum, one semester a year, as part of the requirement, which was meaning our graduation requirements policy, that's why they were all kind of looking at me. And I think I have a lot of concerns when I, when I look at some of our class size numbers that we're having to deal with, some of our availability for kids to have semester courses, with the scheduling issues that we've talked about, that sometimes things are, you know, people are running into. Some of the concerns that we've also raised, which I know you're in agreement with, of concerns about study halls and some students that meets their needs and expectations in other ways, it may not be serving the purpose of, of what we were hoping to, to achieve, of making sure that we're really presenting our students with a lot of rigor and taking every opportunity. So I will say, I'm, I'm kind of pushing a little bit, saying, I, I've done some research, and there are a lot of schools here in Massachusetts that allow for other things to account and accommodate for that physical education wellness accreditation, giving kids other opportunities to fulfill their schedule. I shared before the meeting tonight, just one example Chelsea had, which I thought was fairly thorough, of different opportunities of involvement, whether it be on team sports, whether it be within the high school structure, or something that was outside and then, you know, written up, cheerleading squads, different performing arts, whether it be through dances. And I really think that there does need to be a discussion with you all, and possibly as part of the graduation requirements, as to whether this was really a service or disservice potentially to some of our students, and meshing with the schedule and all the wishes of continuing of rigor for our students. So I bring that up at the Program of Studies only because we're looking for more opportunities for the students to get rigor. We're looking for semester offerings, as I know you're trying to continue to, to push that, but I am concerned that we went ahead to go down the road, previous to you being here, of removing that opportunity of the athletic waiver, yet really not having the fulfillment of a more rigorous wellness curriculum, yet we still really haven't been able to move too much further ahead. And are we necessarily in kind of a standstill, or should we really take a look at it? So I, I offer that more as just concern, and that we're going to need to have some more thorough discussion around it, I would suggest, because I feel like in some cases, at least from my position, I feel like we may have put the cart before the horse on moving forward with the removal of the waiver and not having the curriculum built within, say, two years. To me, feels like we may have moved too quickly, too soon. So, and I, you know, I bring that up because I, I think about the study hall situation, our semester offerings. I'm looking at some of the opportunities, if I look at the semester offerings, and I'm going to try and find all of my different little notes, there were a lot of wonderful English and science opportunities, but when I was looking at some of those semester offerings, they're really only offered for our 11th and 12th graders. Yet when I was trying to read through, I wasn't necessarily seeing prerequisites. So, again, and it's me not necessarily having the familiarity there, but is that something where we want to look at opening those up so that 10th graders could potentially experience some of those other opportunities? I don't know. And I want to create as many opportunities, as I'm sure you do and we all do, of more rigor, more interest in expanding their horizons rather than less. And anything that we can do that by limiting the amount of study hall time, I think, would be a good thing. So, kind of put that out there. Who for thought and discussion?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, for my own clarification, there are some edits that I have to make to this document, that I reflected at the beginning relative to French, and I think there was a, a year piece that I need to remove.
Yeah, remove because it's passed.
Yeah, because it's passed, it just needs to be updated. So I guess I'm proposing that, I guess I'm asking for the school committee to just say, approve it-
Yes.
With the understanding that I'm going to make those changes, and they'll be reflected in the web version of the Program of Studies.
Motion to approve with those proposed edits.
Thanks.
Motion made, seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose carries.
See, Charlie, we're not that mean. I know that.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
FY18 Superintendent's Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, as you know, we had a budget workshop on the 9th of March to discuss our budget proposal. I welcomed the questions, and you received a few days ago, if not last week, the answers to some of the questions that you had posed. So we are here to answer any other questions that have come forth, but we're seeking approval of the budget.
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Discussion?
Get it going.
Oh, Miss Tennessee.
Shocker. I'm sure. So, thank you for my, for all of the discussion we've had over the last number of weeks, I guess.
Thank you.
Let me get to that page if I might. So something that has continued to, I guess, plague me a little bit, was looking at that math interventionist at Jarek Elementary. While I can appreciate a need for an interventionist, I guess my question really continues to revolve around a few points. Is this really more looking for satisfying, supporting more children because of ratio numbers at Jarek? Or are we talking about supporting, you know, where we've got data that is showing us that we're having issues with something? Because from my best recollection, and I couldn't put my finger on it really quickly, our data points are showing that Richer is actually, as an elementary school, having more issues, I believe, across the board in math and in ELA. And, again, not the top of my knowledge base, so go forth.
So there's, can I just put, say two things? First of all, Richer School does have a math interventionist already. This is just bringing-
Okay, that's what I kind of thought, but I couldn't find it today.
-Jarek up to the same level. Another thing that we do, because of Title I funding, we have to do a comparability report every year to look at the staffing and how much district LEA funds we're putting towards every school. And it's the, based on the amount of, the ratio of the enrollment to the staff. And so we looked at that, and yes, Jarek does need that additional position.
Yep, okay. Thanks, Mary, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Mary, before you go, so to piggyback just on that question, because interesting enough, you had provided the slide for the EL community that had that data-
Yep.
And using math as an example, as Catherine has said, Richer still has the greatest need.
Mm-hmm.
Would, understanding the ratios have to be met, is there a need for an additional resource, though, at Richer to help narrow that gap?
So I think it is that if, that Richer School is looking at their data on a weekly basis. They have a robust system of screenings, testing, and looking at datas. So they're looking at data on a regular basis. And their data is showing an improvement. If you go in and you, if, when I go in and I look at their FastBridge, their students' proficiency rate is increasing at the kindergarten, the first grade, the second grade. So the interventions that are in place at that school are working. It's exciting to look at that data. So it's, it seems what's in place.
So year two, we should, because of the person that's been there, or the people that are in the programs that they've put in place-
Systems that are being put into place, yes.
That year two will be that measurement of whether or not there's an additional need.
Yes. And moving forward, it would depend on-
Right.
Different changes.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Why not? So when we were looking at some of the class size information specifically around the Whitcomb Wellness class sizes, and thank you for the information that you provided, because that's helpful, I still was pretty shocked at those numbers that we had for 12, probably about 16 to 18 classes throughout the school, that are at least-
Thirty.
Class sizes of 36 children plus, which seems pretty high. And I guess, I, I understand from the discussion with Mr. Daniels, that he was talking about changes to the schedule-
Correct.
Still plagues me as to, are we really talking about needing to have another wellness teacher to bring down those class size numbers?
The three by three that has been proposed for next year will lower some of those sizes. We've been assured, we've had labor management meetings with the wellness teachers from, from Whitcomb, and they are very satisfied with the plan moving forward.
Okay, so in tandem-
If the three by three is, and it looks as though that will be adopted.
Which, that's good, I guess, if that's the way to go. I will say, the numbers, the, the numbers that you also sent through-
For music.
For music are really concerning, because I feel like we are eroding our music program. Right now, you know, I think it's incredible that we have 225 students that are participating in fourth grade at a music-
in 4th grade at a music program that basically is choral-based because that was all we could do at that point. We needed to remove the instrumental opportunity at 4th grade a number of years ago. I get it. I think it gives them a good basis, makes sense. We go to 5th grade, there's 261 students across chorus, band, and strings. 6th grade, only 137 students involved in a performing group. And it erodes even more, 86 students in 7th grade and 108th grade. So, I'm just concerned because if we really look at our history of what has happened with the music program and changing the structure, which we just changed the year before, to the cascading schedule, the seven, you know, seven-day schedule with the cascade of meaning six times, meaning there were two opportunities for an instrument, two opportunities potentially for choral, you know, choral group, and two opportunities for wellness, I'm really concerned that we are, in some ways, giving an opportunity for, say, instrumental, but in other ways, taking away. And are we taking away to support wellness program where we just established that, once again, we don't have a robust wellness curriculum in place, yet we are building a program to try to bring equity, yet it doesn't make sense to me? And I'm concerned because we've always talked about the, you know, full, the child that is, that is involved in all of it, right? That has all of these opportunity, the whole child, yet I feel like in some ways, we are potentially eroding that whole child opportunity with some of the changes that have happened with our music program, and especially at the middle school where it's their opportunity to actually get their first chance of trying something. So, I'm really concerned, and I'm pushing back a little bit to say, if it's a matter that we need to talk about a staff person to help, because we didn't really give that seven-day cycle much of a try. We did it one year. And when we asked in the fall about the class size numbers, when we were then presented that there were concerns last fall, and we were told that it was being addressed, and it really wasn't addressed, if these are the numbers we're still seeing, the way to address it now is a year later, we have to change. I have to question, is it really a staffing issue? Is it a scheduling issue? Is it a little bit of both?
From what I, I believe it's more of a scheduling issue than a staffing issue, and Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Bertoni have been working on this meeting continually. Sure, Mary. So, some of the things that we're looking for in the three-by-three I outlined for you there, there is one group that is crunched. So, those who take singular selections are actually increasing by one on the three-by-three. So, we're looking at parity from the get-go. That's the goal. The people getting crunched are the ones taking an instrument and a chorus who have one less than they currently have. That being said, provisions are being looked at for after-school chorus and for collaboration throughout the day between the music teachers in terms of a swap. If there is, you know, an event coming up, as Tim talked about, MICA, or some equivalent of that at the middle school, they would give way to that performance and then, you know, move. It's really more of a scheduling issue from what I've understood, more so, more so than another staff member. A staff member was not requested.
I fully recognize it wasn't. And I, not my job, but it brings a lot of concern where I see that we start kids on a path with music from a choral standpoint, and pretty quickly, we are ripping out the opportunity of them to experience both because we're not giving them that chance. We're not giving them the time, and we just started on this seven-day cycle last year, and we're changing it already. And I question whether that's smart, that we're making that kind of a new change again when we move to, from STEM in some sections to STEAM overall. We made the adaptation where music was in direct, you know.
The same block.
Same block, whatever you want to call it, with wellness. We have a wellness curriculum that's not been further developed yet. We're trying to then support it from a parity standpoint, and we have changes where now computer science, engineering, and arts are all fighting or competing for time as well, and it changed to try and get the time on learning for the core courses. I get it. Are we trying to change things so quickly when we haven't even tried to identify what some of these issues are and potentially solve it without, once again, changing the schedule? To me, I'm looking at the numbers, and I have concerns that there may be some other solutions in place that I thought were already happening this past fall and, you know, into the winter, and it didn't happen.
Some classes were adjusted. Music and wellness were adjusted in the fall to respond to the big, the huge classes.
Right, but we're still, I mean, in all due respect, we are talking about some pretty large classes where, when I looked up some data information, a PE class in a middle school should really stay around, say, 30?
25, 26 is what we're looking at if the three-by-three comes online for next year. So.
But we are already, we're almost the full year into what happened, and the adjustment has not been made, and we still have had classes that are well over that number. And my concern is, is that I don't quite understand why the administrator didn't bring this forward and find a different solution sooner rather than now later. Because coming up at budget is, from my perspective, inappropriate when we discussed this last fall. And so, I do have concerns about that.
Okay. Can I just, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the three-by-three from the music department is what they're requesting. It gives them additional band time. So, when you look at this chart and you see the number of students that decline going into 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, those students have had the opportunity to do both this year, and they're identifying in one area of the other, and the band time, instructional time, is not enough. Two hours is not enough. They absolutely, positively need the third hour, and you cannot keep on the four, the seven-day cycle and increase band time. So, this is a direct request from the music department.
Mary, is that also, though, potentially by the way that the lesson structure changed a few years ago as well? I'm just curious.
Absolutely, because if they, if you were, if they continue to be pulled out of content classes, yes, recycling, but that was a decision, because that's time on learning, that they were, that students were missing.
Agreed. I guess my, where I'm going, though, is from a historical standpoint. We've made some really drastic changes along the way.
Absolutely, right.
And we haven't necessarily found the patchwork to try and provide, then the opportunity, as I think Jonathan has spoken about, of giving them time where the performance groups would be able to overlap appropriately, which is just part of being able to work that structure, and you get to learn your craft.
Right. But you cannot do STEAM and that at the same time. So, middle school, yes.
The way that the structure is at all.
Not with the, with the additional class, with the STEAM. It would, it does not fit into that schedule and the STEAM model, so, choices have to be made. We can't do everything all the time. That's our problem.
Completely agree, but I guess I would question whether we've really given them much opportunity to actually try things before we've taken it away from them. So, I definitely have concerns around it. It's, I'm not in any position of going, I want to increase the budget.
No, no.
I'm concerned, though, that are we looking for parity and bringing equity when, once again, we're talking about, we still don't have a vigorous wellness curriculum that was supposed to have been in the process of being developed, and we're all, we're trying to make these changes now, which I feel in some cases are very reactionary, which need to be to a certain extent in regards to class sizes, but are there other options that could have been considered to still make sure that we were meeting those needs and still making sure that we were meeting, you know, ability of the music program still continuing to flourish when we have really, for years, talked about how important the whole child is?
Agreed. Many times, they have met this year, I know, to wrestle this out. I sat in on a few of the last meetings and, with respectful disagreement between them, have wrestled to this point that this is the best for all of the students. And I know that Mr. Rosenthal tracks very closely the drop-off. And the drop-off hasn't just started now. The drop-off has been a little bit of a historical trend, and I think one of his great responses to the drop-off is the All-City Chorus, the All-City Band, and the All-City Strings because it gives, if you've been to those performances, the younger children a chance to see what they can aspire to, and it's really wonderful to see the whole, the whole group. So, he has responded in kind, and no, no request for further staff has come from him to the building principal.
Other questions from the committee? Spot and hint.
I would like to discuss what Ms. Cox presented to us because I learned some things, and I, I'm concerned that we're falling farther and farther behind our peer communities in this realm, especially when we have such an achievement gap, and whether or not we need to take a second look at adding an elementary librarian.
Welcome. Any more conversation about that? Mrs. Murphy, it was two years ago that we, the superintendent, thought the best bang for the buck was the literacy specialist in the library versus the librarians. And that is what we did, thinking that that would fill the gap better and that parents would help with sort of the shelving of the books and so on, that that was a better use of the funds because precisely of the achievement gap.
And, yes, and I did meet with Allison earlier this year, before, with the beginning of the budget process, and we did have a discussion at the table about moving forward the library, librarian position. The issue was that the, as was presented to the school committee, the principals were very happy with the literacy model that's in place, and they did not feel like they were in a position to be requesting another position at this time, so they did not move that request forward.
Sorry, I mean, while, while I hear what you're saying, I guess I'm going to say, overall, I think there's often a sensitivity when something's been handed down and decreased previously, it's very hard for someone to raise their hand when there are a lot of different areas that need to be covered. So, I just know that when you're in a business structure, you don't necessarily want to step out of line and make a request when there are a lot of different areas that need addressing. And I think when we had discussed this, and I tried to go back and actually pull some of that, that old information because I was really torn when we, you know, decided to go away from that structure, frankly, and you're nodding your head. I've worked in the library previously, and the idea that the parents are going to pull that off, of course, you're going to have wonderful PTO support, and those parents are going to do everything they can because they want the children, not just their own, they want the children of the school to benefit. So, none of them are going to want to let something go down by the wayside, but I don't think it's a matter of whether the parents are doing the job or not. It's, do we want to start our kids on the right path early on? You know, we've talked about the early intervention, whether it be at ECC or teaching them the appropriate skills in an earlier standpoint, and the earlier you can get to them, normally the more benefits that you have. So, you know, I do have concerns about that. We've taken that away where was that necessarily, again, the solution? I think the literacy folks at the schools are doing a great job, not taking that away from them, but is that, you know, is that something that should have been a replacement, or did it need to be an add-on?
Well.
Go ahead.
What I'd just add to that is, you know, I think that having someone, even if it's just one librarian, that is helping to inform the curriculum and the resources that are going to be there. I mean, even if you got one librarian, they wouldn't be fully staffing three schools. They would be overseeing what's going on and helping to inform. I don't think we'd be taking away the work that the folks that are there now are doing.
We currently have the Instructional Technology Specialist, Nancy Maurice, working in the three schools. She is one. And I would say there's some overlap there because some of the digital literacy standards are embedded in the work. I was in a classroom, she was conducting the other day, and I was amazed at the things the second graders were doing. So, she makes her way through, it's not a certified librarian, but some of the work that she's doing in terms of how to have students search and use the Internet is happening in those classrooms in the elementary. She's one person who goes around. She's in great demand. So, some of that is an overlap, not all.
Well, and the other thing was that at the time that we agreed with your predecessor that changing the model that we were using, that was one part of the process. The rest of it was to put more resources into those libraries to make them more of a digital and.
Learning commons. Learning commons was the term.
And so, you know, to do part of the plan and not complete the plan is only part of the plan. And, you know, I think there's a lot more that we can be doing, particularly, as Ms. Tennessee said, at the younger ages. I mean, we were talking about the fact that we're still doing the, what I think is ridiculous, test at 9th grade when all these kids run circles around us in technology to see if they know or not. I mean, come on. The kids in the 2nd grade know more.
They do.
You know, they could probably pass that test. And for us to be there, and one of the points that Ms. Cox made that I really take to heart is teaching kids how to, to the best of their, you know, developmental abilities, capacity, to identify what's legitimate on the Internet.
Real or fake news?
Yeah, real or fake news, safety in the Internet. You know, we talk a blue streak about that and we write policies, but if you're not in there teaching the kids what that means, it doesn't mean anything.
You can put as many blocks up as you want.
Exactly. So, right.
Again, some of that is, and I've seen it with my own eyes, the Instructional Technology Specialist, and she is only one for the three schools, but it's, it's much more than we've had in the past, and that is happening. The discernment as you do a search, how to search, so on. So, some of that is happening. The digital citizenship, I should say.
And how effective is one person cycling through all the schools in terms of reaching all of the kids in the three elementary schools?
Well, I was just going to say, Maureen, I think you're speaking to actually the need of adding those positions back by pointing out that one person can't do it all. And these things, the interventionists do have a job to do. That's why we have the literacy specialist, the math interventionist, the reading interventionist and all of those things, but they can't, they're not providing what we know is a changing environment.
Correct.
And one person can't do it all.
So, are you suggesting we add more ITS at the elementary level or a certified librarian? Or both?
Well, I mean, if having a certified librarian can bring more resources to the district in terms of the state programs, state, federal, that you had mentioned that.
Yeah.
You know.
No, but the grants you were talking about.
No, 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 but you said the grants that they will only give to, if you have a certified.
Just the Massachusetts Board of Library and the Massachusetts Library Assistant.
I mean, that could pay, you know, I mean, considering the resources that it might open for us.
Correct.
I guess if we were going to add a person, I think we should look towards a librarian, then.
I would need to know if, more details if that is, in the district, you need X number of certified librarians, or to get those funds, do you need them in that site? So, you just need one certified librarian in the district? So, we have that to get funds.
At the middle school level.
In the middle school.
But not at the elementary level.
Technically, we're not allowed to open resources in the elementary.
Below the middle school.
Can I suggest we ask the superintendent to...
Can I suggest we ask the superintendent to review this?
Sure.
Take a look at it. We have a $60 million budget. If it's the next piece we want to hire someone for, or it's, not that we want to hire someone for, the recommendation of the superintendent is this is the, that next need that we have in the system.
We can find the funds.
We can take a look at it within the budget, I think.
I would just ask the superintendent, as she's raised, in some respects, I consider the hiring of a librarian to be somewhat of a step back. The world's going digital. We just talked about how kids in second grade can run circles around us as adults with the technology. I envision over the next 10, 15, 20 years, our libraries are going to become e-libraries with eBooks. If we can somehow hire anybody, perhaps we do want to hire another Instructional Technology Specialist and see what we can wrap into that position to also service. I'm very hesitant to reopen the door again to librarians when we just made the decision two years ago or thereabouts to move to the literacy model, which I remind people was because we could then qualify it as time on learning. And with technology expanding the way it is, I feel there's got to be a way to do it if we're going to take on new personnel, to do it within the rubric of an ITS as opposed to a librarian. But again, I don't want to disparage librarians. If we had the resources and we could, I'd put one in every school, but as we all know, we don't have a limitless bucket. So I think we've got to look at, is the librarian model the better way to go?
Agreed.
Or as I suspect, is it the ITS model that's the better way to go to try to service these kids?
Or librarian specialty.
Or some hybrid of the two or something, but let's not step back and, you know, lose sight of the fact that we're expanding digitally here at a rapid pace, and I can't imagine that we're going back, you know, we're still going to have physical books for a long time. I get it, but the trend is going to be, you know, going much more digital in technology, in my opinion, sooner rather than later. So I would just ask that we...
Sure. Look at both sides.
Make a macro consideration of this issue.
Absolutely.
And I think part of that may be, and not exactly a clear understanding of what a librarian actually is.
No, 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 I understand they have a role.
Because they... No, 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 I think their training is...
Is different.
It's different, but there are a lot of similarities.
We made this decision two years ago, assuming we had full knowledge of what the repercussions would be and what model we wanted to move towards, so let's, let's just, I'm saying, open the discussion up and the consideration to both cost.
Absolutely. And what is the goal? What is the goal of this?
We have chairs.
Have further meetings with the librarians and talk with the principals. What is the goal?
Yeah, well, and the reality is, we didn't, it's not like we had a librarian that we got rid of. We had paraeducators staffing the librarians. We did not have a licensed librarian.
All I'm asking is let's...
At the elementary level.
At the elementary level.
At the elementary level.
Right.
So I just wanted to add one more piece, an interesting note, to the ITS discussion. We now have Tom Platy as the Director of Instructional Technology, new on board this year, two new ITSs, one at the elementary and one at the middle. It heartened me so much to see at the high school level, with a retirement of the ITS, three teachers applied for that position, three core academic teachers applied for that position, which shows me, number one, the work that has been done in this area, and to your point, Mr. Walter, the movement, the evolution of the intersection between the curriculum, the content, and the delivery of it through technology. That was amazing for me to see that, and they're all fantastic teachers in their content, willing to make this jump, so just as a point of reference, but we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Did you want to say something?
Any other questions of the committee? No other questions. There was a motion made and seconded to approve as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cafeteria workers' contract.
So we have entered into an agreement with the cafeteria SEIU Local 888 for two years, ending August 31st, 2018, that they, their unit has ratified, and I presented to you all this, earlier this evening.
Bless you.
Bless you. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
What?
Just like to thank the cafeteria for their work on the contract.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Acceptance of donations and gifts.
The first gift is, or it's grant from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary around the Early Childhood Improvement Grant.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Sandis Corporation matching gift program to benefit the students at MPS, $6,075.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion to approve and accept with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Reports to subcommittees. Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. So the policy subcommittee will be meeting March 30th, March, yeah, March 30th, so Thursday? Thursday. In the afternoon to review a number of different things. That's it.
Any other reports to subcommittees? Ms. Matthews?
Negotiations is opened with the Behavior Techs, and we have ongoing impact bargaining with the MEA and Unit B. And I've reviewed the warrant with Mr. Bergeron and seeing no questions yet again, we'll sign it.
Any other reports to subcommittees?
Are you going to talk?
The Mini Subcommittee. Mini Subcommittee of Negotiations with the superintendent.
Mini Subcommittee?
Yeah, yeah. Motion to approve the superintendent's contract.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract for the superintendent. Any discussion?
I'd like to accept the contract.
How about thanking her for working with us?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
For giving me the honor. Thank you.
It's been a long time, and it wasn't in your court, it was in my court, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members' forum?
Congratulations, you're the superintendent.
That's what the sign says.
I've been checking it every week to see if we have a...
I am checking it. Checking it.
Any members? Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. In regards to the modular classroom question, can, even though that's going to be a small group that's getting together, since obviously it has a lot of implications, and we do obviously have some needs, if you could at least, you know, keep some form of communication up with us as to when the meeting's going to take place and that kind of thing, as opposed to needing to harp on you, because I'm sure you don't like that.
Uh-uh.
And I will.
The bigger building's been more important these days because we're up against it, so...
And I get, and I definitely understand how the big building is, but obviously with the class size concerns, which we all know, so, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I do want to make sure that we are moving forward because, as you and I know, we've all talked about that time element of trying to get it, get it in there and installed is, you know, impending.
I would assume we'll have a date either tomorrow or Thursday in the latest.
Okay, thank you.
If it hasn't been done yet.
And then I did want to say, congratulations to the students that were involved in Spring Sing, which was on Friday, March 24th, and it was a really great event. I went. I know you were there.
I was there. Yes, I was.
And, you know, I just would encourage folks to try and take advantage of those type of opportunities because it is amazing to see the talent that we have here. And as well, I guess on that same note, was the musical is coming up, April 7th, 8th, and 9th. Susicle, the musical, will be presented, and...
Is that what it is?
No.
Sorry, Susan?
A lot of it, yes.
No, are you in it?
Susan's in Tech Crew.
That's just important.
Which is very important. We can't go on without Susan. So that's going to be happening, so it'll be on the night of the 7th and the 8th, and a matinee on the 9th. And for families where, you know, you haven't necessarily taken your children to come see the show, this is the show to come to.
Will we all get tiny Cat in the Hat hats?
I can't give it all away, but I do have some inside knowledge that there could be some fun things like that with little hats, maybe.
Good.
And some fun concession things, so.
Any other members? Any other members? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much.